We have Morty Gross is in the
Here friend.
Do we have, um, we're missing, um, Jerry?
Oh yeah.
Alright guys, we're live.
If someone should send Jerry the link. I'm not sure he got it.
Well, there's enough talent. Did he write, did he say anything to you?
Where's?
One second Terry, you're saying Jerry's in the old link, so he's in a, he's in a chatroom all by himself?
I don't know if he got the link of this meeting or not, or maybe he's just, he's just late, I don't know.
Do you have one?
Stand to everyone.
Do you have one? Terry, because mine is
Jason sent me the link, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna forward, uh, the link Jason sent me, I'm gonna send it to Jerry now.
Okay, because I don't have device one on this other computer here.
Hang on one second.
I'm working to pay bills?
You know what? As long as mine are in there, I'll second it.
Okay.
Send this to, to Jerry now, guys.
Mosh, I see you like your, your restaurant or your classroom you are in. Uh, Mosh?
He's in the car, I'm mute.
He's in the car.
He's just getting into his house.
I got it.
Are you talking to Mosh Inba?
Mosh Inba.
Okay, he's in his, I just changed the back.
He said, I like, I like your classroom.
It's the new 2021 look.
I hear ya. I thought, I thought, I thought, um, Morty, um, what's his name? Is it, Judah's in the 2020 look? You know, some vacation home somewhere.
Judah, wake up.
Yeah, I'm here.
Alright, who are we waiting for? Jerry?
Um, Morty Gross is going into his house, he's got these numbers.
And that's a cellphone.
Right, he's just getting into his house if you wanna wait another minute or two.
Okay.
We need Jerry.
Give me, give me a minute and then you get to look at my face.
We need Jerry Dasty, we can't do any
I'm gonna send Jerry the text, uh, and let him know that I emailed the link.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a corner? Morty, I see Morty. Um, um, Mr. Gelli, myself, Obi, Mosh, Naftali, and, um, Judah. Mosh Langkri is missing, that's fine. Okay, so what we're waiting for is for Jerry Dasty.
Alright. I think Mosh Langkri was on.
Oh, Mosh Pizza, there he is, Mosh Langkri
Too much.
Uh, Mosh just logged on.
And I see Morty. At least the, uh, names anyway.
Yeah.
I just texted and sent Jerry the email and the link.
Uh, hello, Mosh.
How you doing, Abe?
Good, thank you.
Mosh, how you doing?
Farghasham, much better.
What just happened here?
Oh yeah. Mosh.
Happy new year, buddy.
Mosh, they didn't have, they didn't have shavers during Corona.
Wise guy.
What just happened here? Why did my camera kick off?
Tough crowd, tough crowd.
It's very, very nervous going into 2021. You know?
I'm gonna mute.
Hey guys, I just joined live, so you get to see my face.
Whoa, with a shave.
Hey, Morty.
Um.
Anybody else has compliments?
And you
Change my face.
Yeah. My camera went dead. I hear you all, but my camera's not on.
For the record, the soon to be nominated engineer complimented you, Morty.
Should I call Jerry, Abe?
Yes, please do.
Yes.
We're five minutes late.
Jerry's never late. Jerry's never late, he's never left you, right?
What happened here? Why isn't my camera working?
Yeah, I just texted a few minutes ago, hope everything's okay.
Make sure your video's on, Abe.
I can't get it on, that's what I'm looking at, why my camera's not on.
You should have a thing in the bottom that says stop video.
No, it's not, it's not seeing my camera.
Yeah, yeah, it's just seeing your, uh, earphones and your mic.
Right. Whoops. There it is. Okay, I got it.
There you go.
There he is.
I got it.
Abe, you wanna call Jerry?
I'll call him in a minute, yeah.
It's not like him.
Jerry's calling me, hang on.
Yeah, go ahead. Abe? Yeah.
Can we do the parts that we don't need lawyer for?
Uh, I wanna wait to hear what, uh, what, what's his name, what Terry, conversation with Terry is.
We can pledge allegiance.
Yeah, um, guys, I just, I just spoke with, he's trying to call in, so, uh, I just copied Jason on Jerry's email, uh, Jason, if he can send Jerry, if there's a call-in number he can use?
Yeah, I know.
Try to dial it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if that's the case, uh, we're, we're gonna open the meeting for tonight's meeting, and then we're going to, um, hopefully have Jerry sign in. Okay? Okay, um, let's move forward. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's meeting has been advertised according to New Jersey State Sunshine Law, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Yes?
Mr. Langkri?
Yes.
Mr. Naftali?
Yes.
Mr. Ribbiat?
Yes.
Mr. Inba?
Here.
Yeah, Mr. Gross?
Here.
Gonzalez and Mr. Halberstam.
Yes, here. Here, I'd like to ask everyone to salute to the flag, um, Obi. I pledge allegiance
Bring this to the flag
To the flag The United States of America
And to the republic
To the republic which stands one nation and the God indivisible and just and just for all Thank you, Obi. Um, moving forward, I just wanna, uh, before we continue tonight's meeting, I wanna just congratulate Morty, um, Gross and Judah Ribbiat for a new term. Uh, welcome back. And, and, uh, Franny, you gave them their oath of office that they had to sign?
Jerry has them and he'll be signing them, and he'll be to give the oaths, they're both, um, they're both, uh, let's say until 12/31/2024.
12/31/2024, okay. Uh, while Jerry comes on, uh, waiting for Jerry to come on, um, let me just ask for a
The minutes?
No, 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 we have time for the minutes. Wait, we have time for the minutes. I'd like to ask, um, Amanda, if she could please put us into, into, um, breakout session, so we can have a private, uh, discussion of what's going on tonight?
Okay, just give me one second, I'll send the breakout sessions to you guys.
Thank you. While, while Amanda's doing that, I just wanted everyone to know that we normally we go into reorg, we go into the back room to discuss the upcoming year, and that's what we're gonna do right now through a breakout session that Amanda is gonna give us through the, through the, um, um, app that we have over here, which is gonna be private, where nobody from the outside could log in and hear us.
Alright, do I have to, to, to log off, Chairman?
No, she's gonna do a breakout session where we log in and you can just stay where you are, and when we're done, we go right, right back into the public meeting.
Alright, that's fine.
Okay? Jerry, I see your phone over pop up. I see you there. Are you here, Jerry? Jerry, breakout session, everyone should just please hit join now.
That's Jerry's cell.
Yeah. Terry, you and I stay, uh, Mayor, you go with them.
What's, how do I get out?
I don't know.
She'll resend you the
Yeah.
There we go, okay.
Alright, what about Morty Gross?
Morty Gross, go in there with them.
Alright.
You and I, Terry. Is Jerry able to get in? Oh, I see it, that's his number?
Yeah, I don't think he replied before when he asked, I don't know who that is.
It matches his cell number, Jason.
Jason and Fran, uh, Jerry just sent me an email saying that he can hear us, but he can't speak. So what I'm going to do, if everybody's okay, I can call Jerry's cell. Um, actually, I can't because Jerry's not here.
Hang on one second, let me unmute him, he's gonna get a request to unmute, and he's gotta hit a certain, uh,
Okay, alright, yeah, I see it, Jason.
Alright, so I just
He has a mute on, you're right.
I think he has to hit star six on his phone or something.
Hello, there I am.
There you are.
God, darn it. Sorry, everyone, I'm very sorry, Chairman, everybody else, to hold everybody up, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's actually good, Jerry, they just went into caucus, they're, they're going over nominations now.
Well, I'm really sorry what a mess this was today. I, I, Fran, are you, I, I know
I'm here, I'm here.
Did you ever send me the, the, I, I guess you did, I just don't see anywhere that you sent me the, uh, the call-in instructions, you know?
I couldn't find it. That's why I emailed.
Do you have, Jerry, do you have the oath of office?
Yes.
Okay.
Fran, did you ever send us the WebEx information?
Yes, of course. Twice.
Okay, thank you. Well, anyway, here I am, and I have the, I have the swearing in information, yes.
Okay. And, uh, um, I, I, Pat, you'll sign them and give them back to Pat, and she'll scan them to me tomorrow.
That's it, you got it.
Okay, thank you. And all we did so far, we took attendance and we didn't even do the minutes yet, and they haven't closed that yet.
Alright, well, thank you.
Oh, you missed, we, you missed, we did salute the flag.
Okay. Franny, who's on now besides you, Terry and I?
But they're all in closed session, everybody is here.
It's just Jason Oaks.
Okay. I just wanted to note, did we hear anything else from our friends on the Hampton Bridge, the Hampton thing?
Remember, we're still live, guys.
Yeah, we're live now, Jerry. Jerry, all eight members are here, they're all in closed session.
So did they appoint, does the township committee appoint anyone to replace Hal?
No. As far as I know, you'll have to check with Abe, I don't know. We do have all, we have eight members here tonight. All eight.
Thank you, Terry, by the way, for helping me out here.
That's okay, Jerry.
Abe, you're on mute.
Abe, you're on mute.
I got it, I got it. Good evening, everyone, just for the record, we're back, we're back in an open session. Uh, and we're just gonna go through the regular reorganization meeting. Uh, we're gonna start with, uh, um, uh, Chair, um, Chairman for tonight's for, for the upcoming year of 2021. Can I have a motion for Chair for 2021?
Mayor Gelli, you're muted. Make a motion to be the Chair, for Abe, I'm about to be the Chairman for 2021.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I have a second on that one?
Second.
Second by Mosh Langkri. Madam Secretary, roll call, please. Thank you, Mosh. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Langkri?
Yes.
Then Naftali? Mr. Ribbiat?
Yes.
Mr. Inba?
Yes.
Mr. Gross? Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halberstam, do you wanna vote yourself?
Well, my wife isn't here, so I'm not, I don't know if I'm allowed to vote for myself. It is correct. Okay, Mosh, please unmute yourself so we can keep on going, you're currently muted, and Morty, Morty's not gonna be hearing it, okay, good. Uh, can I have a motion for Vice Chair for the year, 2021?
I'll make a motion for Vice Chair, Obi Gonzalez, 2021.
2021, thank you, Mosh. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, who was that?
Judah.
Judah. Can I have, can I have a, um, thank you, Judah. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Langkri?
Yes.
Mr. Naftali? Mr. Ribbiat?
Yes.
Mr. Inba?
Yes.
Mr. Halberstam? Obi, wanna vote yourself?
Yes, thank you.
Everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, moving forward, can I have a motion for Attorney for the upcoming year 2021?
Motion.
Who was, who was that?
Judah.
Judah made a first motion, can I have a second on that one?
Uh, what attorney?
Who's attorney?
We'll go with Jerry.
We'll go with Jerry, okay. Jerry, you're gonna be stuck with us for another year, Jerry, I don't know if you want that, just a few minutes. Back out.
I appreciate it very much, Chairman, thank you.
You got it. Remember, this is Lakewood. Um, I have a motion from Judah, who's second on that one?
Mosh Inba.
Mosh Inba's second. Thank you, Mosh. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Langkri?
Yes, Abram Naftali, you're on mute.
Mr. Naftali raised his hand. Ribbiat, Mr. Ribbiat?
Yes.
Inba?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Gross? Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes, congratulations, Mom, Jerry, welcome aboard.
Thanks, sir.
Can I have a motion for Planner and Engineer? One motion for both? Because we're using the same company, if we're gonna be using the same company? Um, can I have a motion for that?
I have a motion for Planner and Engineer.
Okay, can I have a motion, who it should be?
Uh.
Terry.
Terry, Terry and Company.
That's Remington Vernon.
Right.
I got it, until, until it counts, you sure? You wanna do that with Terry? Okay.
Yeah, why not? TV's not where it used to be.
A motion from, I have a motion from Obi, can I have a second on that one?
A second.
Second for Mosh Langkri, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Langkri?
Yes.
Mr. Naftali?
Yes.
Mr. Ribbiat?
Yes.
And Mr. Inba?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halberstam?
Yes. Good luck, Terry, welcome aboard. Now, can I have
Thank you very much, Terry.
Can I have a motion for an esteemed secretary that's very well versed in tech language, so we can have this very smoothly?
Have it.
I have a motion. Yeah, look at that, everyone's jumping up to make a motion, they can't figure it out. An anonymous vote, look at that, for the most tech person in the industry. I have a motion for Mayor Gelli, I have a second from
Can we do it from
Abram Naftali.
Mr. Gelli, would you like to call for a $5 raise for Fran?
No. She's so catchy, go to Wall Street with her information, she can go there and collect her $5. Okay, uh, Madam Secretary, can I have a, a motion?
No, we got the motion, we need a roll call vote.
I mean, a roll call, I meant, I'm sorry.
Mr. Langkri?
Yes.
Mr. Langkri?
Yes.
Mr. Naftali?
Yes.
Mr. Ribbiat?
Yes. I had to think about it.
Mr. Inba? Where's Inba?
Yes, yes.
And Mr. Gross?
Mr. Gross is not voting tonight.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halberstam?
Yes.
With pleasure.
Thank you, welcome aboard, welcome back, um, um,
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Everyone, everyone, round of applause for our wonderful secretary.
And that's without coffee and cake.
That's what I have to go for, okay.
That's right.
Don't worry, we'll take a rain check.
Okay.
We all voted you in.
Okay. Uh, moving forward, uh, can I have approval of the minutes for December 7th meeting?
Move it.
Uh, that was from Obi, can I have a second on that?
A second.
Second, Mayor Gelli, Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Naftali?
Yes.
Ribbiat?
Mr. Ribbiat?
Mr. Inba?
Yes.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Halberstam?
Yes. Can I have a motion for the approval of the calendar for 2021?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Gelli, can I have a second on that one?
Second, Mosh Inba.
Second. Mosh, was that you? Okay, I have a second for Mosh Inba. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Mr. Langkri?
Yes.
Mr. Naftali?
Yes.
Mr. Ribbiat?
Yes.
Mr. Inba?
Yes.
Mr. Gross, Mr. Gonzalez? And Mr. Halberstam?
Yes. Can I have a motion for the approval of the annual report for 2021?
Motion.
Motion by Mosh, um, Langkri, can I have a second on that?
A second.
Second by Mayor Gelli, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Gelli?
Yes.
Langkri?
Yes.
Mr. Naftali?
Yes.
Mr. Ribbiat?
Yes.
Mr. Inba?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that'll, that'll conclude the reorganization portion of tonight's meeting.
What's, Abe, excuse me, one second, Mr. Chairman, what?
What?
What about Morty getting sworn in?
So we spoke about it, um, um, uh, what's his name? Dasty is gonna send them their, their oath of office to, to have them sign.
Jerry has the oath of office, he can do, he's gonna do it now, I think.
Jerry?
He can do it now, Chairman, if you wish.
Yes, please.
I'm ready to go.
Alright, uh, Mr. Gross, are you there, sir?
Yes, I am.
Alright, you can be there for me. I, Morty Gross.
I, Morty Gross.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
Uh, we are true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in the state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully
And I will faithfully
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform
And justly perform.
Come in.
All the duties of, as, of a member of the zoning board of adjustments for a term to expire on December 31, 2024.
All the duties of a member of the zoning board of adjustments to a term to expire on December 2024.
According to the best of my
According to the best of my ability, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mr. Mr. Ribbiat, you're up.
Yes, sir.
Ready?
I am.
I, Judah Ribbiat.
I, Judah Ribbiat.
Do here, do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution, Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in the state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
Impartially and justly.
And, did you say
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties
Perform all the duties.
Of a member of the zoning board of adjustments for a term to expire on December 31, 2024.
Of a boarding, z- say again, of zoning
I'm sorry, member of the zoning board of adjustments.
Of a member of the zoning board of adjustments
For a term to expire on
For a term to expire on December 31, 2024.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you, sir, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Chairman. Back to you, sir.
Chairman, wake up. Chairman, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Wake up, Obi.
I was playing around with my machine.
Okay, are we finished tonight's session?
Yes, um, we're, we're finished tonight, with, um, we're, hold on a second. Tonight's session, I just wanna make one quick announcement for tonight's session. The announcement is as follows, that anyone that's here on tonight's, um, um, if anyone's here for tonight's, uh, agenda, please note that its whole agenda was been postponed for, for next week, Monday, the 11th, due to agenda, please note that its whole agenda was been postponed for, for next week, Monday, the 11th, due to a technicality of, of advertisement. So therefore, it cannot, it cannot be heard, it cannot be heard tonight. And the rest of the meeting will not, will not be heard. Uh, with that said, it's just an official notice that it has been postponed to, to January 11th. Uh, Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence on tonight's meeting outside of the actual meeting itself?
No, so you want me to read the appeal numbers and the applicants? It'll be next week.
Not necessary.
No, not necessary.
Okay.
Okay, we can't vote, we can't do anything. The whole meeting was, has been postponed, and with that, I will close. Excuse me, Jerry?
You wanna do the resolutions?
Yes, I'm sorry, you're right.
Can you hear me, Chairman?
Very faint, very, very faint.
Chairman. Uh, yes, you should vote on this, please. Vote on each one.
Chairman.
Vote on what?
Each application. We want you to vote on each application. So I'll be each one.
Can I vote among, Jerry, can I make one big announcement, all the, all the numbers together?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
No, no, no notice.
No new notice, okay. Yes, yes, um, Judah.
Um, it's Mosh, it's Mosh Inger.
Yes.
Do you wanna just, do you think it's a good idea to vote on the resolution of last month's application on Route 9 where the road went into Cedar? Do you wanna wait on that? I know there were some questions that Chairman may have had.
Well, if you, if I, I, if you have a, I didn't, I did not have a chance to read it, so let's wait till next week to vote on that one. It's a good thought. Thank you.
Okay, I think we should wait, just so we can say, I haven't seen the resolution, and I know it caused, it caused, whatever, we, we, we have to maybe look at that a little better.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so
4166, Mordecai Arman.
So
Old Business.
Franny, we're gonna go 4166, Mordecai Arman, Old Business. We're gonna go 4115, Hampton Development. 4168, David Bernstein. 4151A, Spruce, Spruce Care LLC, Spruce Care LLC. All these are gonna be heard next week on, on, Franny, you're gonna hang, you're gonna give around, you're gonna send around a, a, um, a new, a new WebEx, um, login, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Perfect. So if that's the case, can I have a motion to postpone that for one week till January, January 11th?
Motion.
7:00 PM, no notice.
No, without any notice. 7:00 PM, without any notice, without further notice. Motion for Mosh Langkry. Can I have a second on that?
I have a second from Mayor Gellie.
Second, Mayor Gellie. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Langley?
Yes.
Mr. Naftali?
Yes.
Ribbiat?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Mr. Halberstam?
Yes, can I have, um, before we all leave, can I have a motion on resolutions? For, besides the one that Mosh Inger just mentioned, one on, on
Appeal number 4163, Joseph Huggins. 4162, with you, Mayor. And appeal number 4164, Marla Arshon.
Okay, can I have a motion for all those resolutions?
Motion.
Motion by Mosh Langkry?
Second.
Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Who was second that one?
Judah.
Judah, okay. Um, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Langley?
Yes.
Mr. Naftali?
Yes.
Ribbiat?
Yes.
Mr. Inger?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
And Mr. Halberstam?
Yes, okay. Motion to adjourn meeting till January 11th?
See you next week.
See you all next week. Take care. Oh, motion to pay bills? Motion to pay bills?
Yes.
Yes, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night.